No, Sue? We need to let people know. It's 10 after? Understood. Wanted to let everyone know that we do have another commissioner coming in here. It's going to be another 10 minutes. So if we could postpone starting the meeting until 10:20 would be appreciated. So this meeting will start at about 10:20. Thank you. There he is. Okay. We have a quorum. So while you're still standing, I would like to bring to order the County of Placer Planning Commission for November the 18th, 2021. Could we all stand for the flag, Sue? Sue, if you could call roll, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Mr. Herzog?
Here.
Mr. Houghey?
Here. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link to the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call us using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247. And please enter the webinar ID 94242468435. Please press star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make a public comment virtually, please raise your hand with your hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If intending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Could I have the planning director's report? George, I understand you're giving it today.
Yes, George Rozosko. I'm sitting in for E.J. Evaldi today. So I just have a few things for you. First thing, Nikki Striegen, who you know from the redistricting process, has resigned from the planning department, and her last day will be December 3rd.
Oh, no.
She has decided to move on. With regard to what happened at the board yesterday, the Placer County Health and Safety Element was approved. The housing-related code amendments were continued. The board voiced some concerns about streamlining. They're concerned that they wanted to look into what streamlining would actually look like with staff having quite a bit of authority about how to approve projects without much public input, so they were concerned about that. They were concerned about the lack of notice for multifamily housing and affordable housing projects, so they wanted to have a look at that. They wanted to make sure that the design guidelines that are being proposed as part of the housing elements are kept current, so they talked about building in some kind of mechanism where they're reexamined on a yearly basis. I think that was discussed at the Planning Commission as well. They would like to have a workshop to discuss these issues. So where they go, I don't know. All the issues that I heard brought up at the board can easily be addressed. I mean, we already have the processes in place. It's just a matter of what the board would like to have happen, so we'll see where that goes. They would also like to have the housing-related code amendments be completed within the first quarter of next year. So they want to have the workshop relatively quickly. They would like it brought back to them within the first quarter of next year.
Hey, George?
Yes?
Let me see. I did hear that the state of California is working on some changes that may reverse some of the other cities that have already turned theirs in. So have you heard anything about that?
Yeah, I have heard some of that. It's pretty nebulous right now. To be honest with you, I don't really follow the housing code amendments. I have enough on my plate without having to follow that as well. But I have heard that there have been some state-proposed changes. If I remember right, I think it came up at the board, and Shana Purvines was pretty confident that what we were proposing would not be affected. But I can follow up on that for you. I'm not totally sure on that, but I think that's what I remember.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. There was discussion about the Placer Legacy Program. The board very much voiced support for that. Over the course of its inception, the board has put $28 million into the Placer Legacy Program, which has been able to be levered to about $58, $59 million for the acquisition of open space and public protection for floodways and that sort of thing. So they're definitely voicing their support for that to keep moving forward, and that they signaled that they will be continuing to give money to that. Placer Ranch Specific Plan Facilitation Agreement was also approved. So do you have any questions for me?
No, I think I did see, though, that the board upheld our decision on that riding rink structure, and that was a couple meetings ago. I don't think that had been--
Oh, the riding rink, the Matranga Riding Rink?
Right, right.
Yes. Matter of fact, it was longer than that. The date, the 90-day removal date is coming up very soon.
Okay.
And I don't see it coming down. I don't see any movement for it to come down. I actually called him personally to talk to him about how it was going to take it down.
Yeah.
It was not a great conversation. So we'll see where that goes.
Okay. Yeah, I just--
Okay, for some of us that somehow missed this meeting a little bit almost, when's our next meeting?
When is our next meeting?
December 9th, I believe.
December 9th?
Okay. I'll have that on my calendar.
Okay.
Which I think is the final meeting for this year, and then we get Christmas off. Okay, so December 9th.
Okay, got it.
Two weeks.
Was there anything else before we launch into the items?
Any other questions for George? Seeing none? Thank you.
Yep.
I will now open public comment for matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? Yes or no? Is backup okay?
Hi, Deborah. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello there. The Zoom call was muted for the majority of the beginning of this. Could you tell, do a quick recap for what participants missed?
Okay, the recap. We began the meeting late, so we now have a quorum. And then after, the only item that we've heard is a report from the planning director, and he informed us the, let's see. Maybe, George, if you could quickly just recap the decisions of the board supervisors--
Is this Cheryl? Is this Cheryl Berkema? No, I thought it was Cheryl. It sounded like Cheryl. So what I informed the planning commission of is what happened at the Board of Supervisors yesterday. Placer County Health and Safety Element was approved. Housing-related code amendments were continued, and they want to have a workshop to address some concerns that they have. The board also discussed the Placer Legacy Program and voiced their support for it, and the Placer Ranch Specific Plan Facilitation Agreement was approved.
Okay. And then we brought up--
And then we brought up at the board or the commission level that the next meeting is December 9th, and it's our last meeting for 2021.
I don't think we have in the record yet the caller's name.
Oh, yeah, could you identify yourself, please?
It's Deborah Casabon.
Thank you, Deborah. Did you have other
You're welcome.
Other comment?
Uh, no, I just wanted to see where we were, because it's, it's been muted for about a half an hour.
Yeah, we did not have a quorum for about a half an hour, so we just began the meeting at about 10:25. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Okay. With that, no other comments, the public comment for, public comment for matters not on the agenda is closed. There are no items on the consent agenda, so we moved on to the time items that begin at, well, at 10:05. So we are moving on to our first timed item, the Walden Woods Unit 1, 2, and 3 Lot Coverage Conditional Use Permit Modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you are calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Adam Anderson, Assistant Planner, will be presenting this item. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman Howgie. Good morning, Commissioners. So I am Adam Anderson. I'm representing the Planning Division, and I will be presenting my staff report for the Walden Woods Coverage Conditional Use Permit Modification to you this morning. Unless this doesn't work. There we go.
You went backwards. Oh, there it is. Okay, good.
So we are here today to consider a request from 12 property owners to modify their conditions of approval to allow for an increased footprint, footprint coverage on their lots. The specific condition is 11B, and it states the maximum building's foundation square footage of detached units to be 3,000 square feet. And for lots listed as part of the Walden Woods Footprint Exemption Group, the following maximum coverage applies. And then it includes a chart that details the new minimum to be 3,500 square feet for all lots in the exemption group that are half an acre in size, and that scales up to 4,000 square feet of lot coverage for lots that are one acre in size or greater. Lots not included in the exemption group are limited to 3,000 square feet in this subdivision. This is the subdivision itself. It is located in Granite Bay. You'll see that it is part of the Granite Bay Community Plan. It is just east of Auburn Folsom Road. It is north of Cabot Stallman Road. Cabot Stallman comes in right by Hidden Valley there. It is also wedged in between Los Lagos subdivision, which is just the north, and the Lakeview Hills subdivision, which is to the south. The community plan for the area, the orange lines there, I know they're a little bit difficult to see, but they will be clear in the next map. Those are all the lots that are part of this request. The green lines indicate the zoning differences there. You'll see that this entire subdivision is zoned residential, single-family, combining ag, combining building site of 40,000 square feet. It is the same zoning as the lot to, or as the subdivision to the south, and it has the same PD description or planned development acreage as the Los Lagos to the north. The blue lines are also roadways. So the subdivision had its tentative map approved back in 1974, and it was one of the first planned development units in the county under that 1974 ordinance. At the time, a percentage of open space and a limit for lot coverage was in place for planned unit developments, and the Walden Woods subdivision met these regulations by creating 27 acres of open space and limiting coverage to 3,000 square feet for foundation footprint. In 2006, the Planning Commission approved a modification to the conditions of approval and created Condition 11B, which allows for lots in the approved exemption group to increase their coverage. The application for this project, or the applicant for this project submitted an application in August of 2021 to add the additional properties to that existing exemption group. So what we have here is, this is Unit 1 of the Walden Woods subdivision, part of Unit 1, 2, and 3. What is highlighted with blue are the lots that are currently within the Walden Woods Footprint Exemption Group, and the lots that are highlighted with red are the lots that are proposing to be added to that exemption group.
Real quick question.
Of course.
With all of these lots, why don't you just do the whole subdivision if you're coming in for a request? Why are we?
We're doing it per how the property owners have requested. So if more property owners came in requesting it, they could go through the same process. And when the applicant reached out to me originally, before they came in, I'd recommended that he reach out to neighbors and share the cost of going through this process. Unfortunately, without the request for the change from the property owners, we can't add it to them.
It just seems piecemeal to me.
One more question. So I'm assuming that all these lots are vacant, or they have houses built on it they want to add?
The entire subdivision is built out.
Okay, thanks.
So the purpose is they want to do additions on
Additions, decks, gazebos, patio covers, anything that would cause an increase in footprint coverage. This is Unit 2 and 3, and it includes, same as the previous map, the blue ones are all the ones that are already included in the exemption group, and the red are the ones requesting to be added to the exemption group. So the existing and surrounding land uses are all single-family residences, and to the, to the east is Folsom Lake and open space zoned lots. The existing land uses to the south include Lakeview Hills subdivision, which has the same zoning as the Walden Woods, the RSAGB 40. It was created in the 1950s, and it was prior to the planned unit development portion of our ordinance, and that subdivision currently allows for 40% coverage for all of the lots in its, in its area. The existing land use to the north is Los Lagos, and that shares the same PD designation as Walden Woods of 1.1 units per acre, and it was created in 1986, and it has a coverage allowance of 6,200 square feet for similar-sized properties as in Walden Woods. Residential properties are also located to the west here. The proposed footprint coverage is more consistent with the coverage allowances in similar zoned areas for this neighborhood. The increase in footprint coverage will not, will not impact the existing open space lot that is still, will be designated as open space. Increase in the footprint coverage will not change the existing setbacks, height limits, or other development standards that are in place for the subdivision, and over half of the subdivision is already within the exemption group. At this time, I haven't received any public comments from members of the community on this project. And the applicant, the applicant has demonstrated due diligence in working with the county to, to implement this project, and therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the proposed modification of the conditional use permit and its, that it is categorically exempt from environmental review under Sequel Guidelines, Section 15305, and County Code Section, Chapter 18.36.070. Also, recommend approval of the modification of the Walden Woods Conditional Use Permit, Condition 11B, to include the additional 11 lots, or 12 lots listed as part of this application. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Are there questions of the Commissioners? Looks like it. Mr. Woodward? Just one question. You indicated there was not any public, no public comments came in. What process did you use to solicit comments from the public?
All of the neighbors within 300 feet of the lots were noticed, and the affidavits of posting were provided to the proposed property owners who would post it on their lots.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Of course.
Richard, did you have
MCIA, they all proposing to go from 3,000 to 3,500?
It's a scale between 3,500 up to 4,000 square feet.
So there's individual properties that want to go to 4,000?
There are individual properties who will be allowed up to 4,000 if they're an acre or greater.
Oh, if they're an acre or greater, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so there, there's a chart that breaks down how
Yeah, pretty much for every point one of an acre, they get an additional 100 square feet between half an acre up to a full acre.
Okay. Nathan, you're the only one. Did you have any questions?
I have a question for Clayton. Can we, as a commission, just recommend the whole subdivision come under this requirement so we don't have to see this again? And it would be consistent, and it would be consistent with other subdivisions in the area? So it just seems piecemeal to be doing it this way.
Yeah, since you don't have a request from the property owners to do that, I think you're limited to the property owner's request, and the reason for that is you'd be modifying their property rights without notice or indication of a public hearing.
All right. Just hate to see this come back with another few property owners, so it doesn't make sense. All right. At this point in time, then, does the applicant have a statement?
Hi, my name is John Hudson. I'm the applicant in question here. So yes, to answer some of the questions you've already had, I've reached out to everyone, we have an email list of everyone in the entire community. I reached out to everyone at the beginning of this process who's not on the exemption group and asked them, would you like to be included? And we can all split the cost. And through many emails and lots of talking at community events, I came up with a list of 12 people who are interested in joining this exemption group. And just for your information, too, I have gone in front of the HOA board, and I've, and in full disclosure with them from the beginning, they also wanted to do the same thing you want to do, where they'd rather just have everyone be included, so they don't have two sets of rules that they have to kind of keep referring to. But I guess as a part of that, you know, you have to have 100% sign-off on everyone, and I think there might be one or two people who disagree with that direction, even though the coverage limits that we would default to are, would be the, the ones adopted by our HOA. And so, you know, there's that to consider, too. And also, we have a Architectural Review Committee within our HOA, which, after this is, after this application, if we, if we get onto the exemption group, we will review each, each project, any additions or anything like that to, to make sure that any proposals are harmonious with the, with the HOA and the community and the direction that we want to go. So, and then, most of the people on this list are just looking for flexibility. There's only a handful of people out of these 12 that, including myself, who immediately want to do a project requiring additional coverage. Many of us in this post-pandemic era are looking at having to work from home, so some people are considering trying to add on a little office to just get quiet from the, the kids and other, you know, distractions. And let's see, what else? Yeah, I think that's about it. Any other impacts that could possibly arise from this? I'm a licensed civil engineer with Caltrans, and I specialize in hydrology, so I've already analyzed potential impacts to runoff in the community. There's two basic watersheds within our, our community, and I have concluded that the additional impervious coverage would produce less than 1% difference, or 1% change in the amount of rainwater runoff experienced in some of the swales. And that's it. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Does the commission have questions?
I have a quick question. Did you base that on everyone using the maximum development that they're allotted?
Correct, yeah. I looked at what the coverage, their current coverage is now and what it would be, and again, it's based off of the lot size. And I personally have the largest lot in the, the community, and so my maximum coverage would go to 3,850, and right now I'm at 3,000, so 850 square feet additional impervious coverage. Thank you.
Other questions in the commission? Well, thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to open up the public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? Please come forward.
My name is Steve Wright. I live at 8122 North Lake Circle in Granite Bay, and I, I live downstream of a portion of this development. And I have a concern because I've been flooded before. I don't want to be flooded again. The drainage facility under Lake, North Lake Circle is inadequate, and because of that, the water flows over the road near the creek, and it drains towards my house. So I've had flooding before years ago. And we, and probably within the last eight years, we were out there with buckets to go ahead and keep the water from entering my house. It came right up the threshold, and because we had barrel after barrel after barrel of water which we moved to the side, we were not flooded, or we would have been. It's a real concern of mine. So my main concerns are the increase in impervious surface on the item shown in, in orange, number 19, number five, and number one. And those, I believe, may result in more runoff going towards my house and result in more flooding. So that's my concern. And I, and I feel that if this is the case, it, it should be mitigated in order to have no, no significant, no significant adverse impact. If it floods my house, that's a significant impact to me.
Can you repeat those lots, please?
It's shown in orange here, 19, looks like it's lot number 63. Orange, number five, lot number 77, and orange, number one, lot number 81. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there any questions?
Any question? Nope. Sir, what was your address again?
8122 North Lake Circle.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? If not, anyone on Zoom? No, not yet. Nobody on Zoom. Okay. I think at this point in time, we're going close to public comments, but I think we'll start with Adam, if you could address it, and then if you want to have the applicant help you, that would be fine, but public comment is closed. And is there, I can't recall if there's a condition to, to retain onsite drainage at the existing levels, anything like that within, in the conditions of approval?
There was not in the conditions that I had.
Okay.
We did ask the Engineering and Surveying Division to review whether or not this increase in coverage would require a, a look at the Folsom Lake watershed for any increases, and they declined to, they did not believe it was significant and needed to be mitigated for.
Okay. And the applicant, you had some information for us that would help us?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to come up to the microphone if you would, please.
Yeah, the properties in question would increase square-foot coverage of 2,700 square feet, which equates to .06 acres. And doing my hydrology calculations, that would result in a increase of .03 CFS, which is in less than, like I said before, less than 1% increase, which would be, within my engineering judgment, less than significant increase, like you probably wouldn't see. And in addition to that, we can, if, if, if it pleases the commission, we can possibly add infiltration galleries, dry wells, to basically attenuate peak flows coming off impervious, so basically downspouts coming off of roofs from additions. We can basically route those into dry wells to we can basically route those into dry wells to attenuate peak flows. And so the gentleman here won't see any additional peak flows from the change.
Yeah, I would like to see a condition such as that, that basically the net flows do not change from the existing conditions, so that we're not increasing that. Any other questions of the commission? Mr. Woodward?
Just a question really for Adam, I think. I need to get a better sense for the location, if it's okay. Can we get the map up so that, and then what I'd like to know is where those lots are exactly? Because it's difficult for me to see, at least on the maps I'm looking at here. Nineteen five and one, and then the resident, eight-one-two-two North Lake Circle. Where that might be?
Oh, I'm sorry, which map?
I think if you go back out to the zoning map, you might be able to give me a better sense and then come into the lot size.
This map?
Yeah.
So we have, we have South Lake Circle here. We have North Lake Circle here. And then the proposed lots are, well, the nearest one is going to be this lot here.
Okay, so have you done, while I appreciate the applicant's credentials and absolutely trust that he's done the, I am terribly sorry about that. I'm sorry, I thought I had that muted. A mistake. So I certainly appreciate the viewpoints of the applicant. But, you know, this is really a county responsibility to make these assessments, it would seem to me. So have you done any study or research into this particular issue?
We might want to let Candace speak to that. She is the engineer that we took our lead on for the water. Candace?
Hi, good morning. This is Candace with engineering and surveying. When we reviewed this project, we did concur with the applicant and his analysis. We concurd that it was a less than significant increase on the existing storm drain system. But I concur with his suggestion that if it is a concern, we could add a condition for the project to mitigate flows to the pre-increase. So instead of the thirty-five, just that five hundred square foot difference for those lots, for example, we could mitigate that difference. But again, we did concur that it was a less than significant impact.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions of the commission? All right, if not, bring them back for discussion. And if not, discussion or motion?
Mr. Howgie?
Yes, George?
So when you proposed that there be a condition to mitigate flow?
Correct.
Did you have, I'm a little worried about leaving it that open-ended. Did you have a specific, like, downspout shall be directed into deep wells onsite?
You know, I don't know if we say how it's done, but I think, you know, typically you find, and I know there's in the subdivision map act for new subdivisions, that the drainage shall not be increased over the existing drainage on the site. So if we could use language similar to that.
Yeah, could we maybe put something, shall be attenuated with onsite drainage mitigation?
Yeah.
I'm not an expert on it, but onsite things like deep wells and some other things like that.
Yeah, I think there's different techniques you could use. So you're basically attenuating that flow until after the event, so.
Could the engineer that just spoke help us with that, or does that make sense?
Yeah, Candace, could you?
Yeah, we do, we do have standard language. I can come up with something right this second, or if you give me a second, I can pull up our standard conditions and read that full language into the record.
I've seen that language before, so Candace, if you could do that. I think Clayton, is it all right for us to make a motion that the standard language regarding drainage be included within this condition of use permit?
Actually, if we could, I'd like to just wait a minute to let her draft the condition. That way, this commission knows exactly what they're voting for in terms of the condition. I am appreciative of her drafting it, though, because I was making an effort at it here. This is definitely out of my realm.
Okay, so we'll wait just a moment for Candace then. Any other discussion before a motion is made? All right, Candace. No pressure, Candace. Yeah, no pressure.
Since we do have some time here, I would like to note that there was a recommended motion listed. In the staff report, there is just one other recommended action to be taken. And it's along the lines of the second one that identifies modification of the use permit. In the staff report at page five, there is a similar request for modification of the Walden Woods units ones, two, and three final subdivision map to include the same information. So when we do get to that point of a motion, if you could just include that as one of the potential motions?
All right.
Okay, so there's a couple ways we could do this. If we were to write the condition, it would probably need to direct the HOA to obtain a grading permit. Or if we wanted each parcel to do it, we could potentially add a condition for it to be added to the development notebook. I don't know if there's a proper way for us to add a condition for all of these parcels individually to mitigate that difference in flows. I'm also messaging with my supervisor, so that's the direction I've been given as well. I can read off the example of the condition directing the HOA to do that, if you'd like to hear it, and then give me your feedback.
Yeah, why don't you read that off, please?
So that one would read, within ninety days of the project approval, the HOA shall obtain a grading permit for the construction of, and we could, what's a specific type of mitigation there? Or just something to detain the flows, to reduce project flows back to existing conditions. The improvement shall be constructed within a hundred and eighty days and to the satisfaction of the DRC. So that would give our group a chance to look at it again.
All right.
Chair, if we could, might I suggest, if this is where the commission is leaning in terms of adding this condition, perhaps you'd allow us to take a five-minute break to discuss the condition and put something together so that we have it cohesively for you?
I think that's appropriate. So the commission will take a five-minute break until, say, let's go to eleven oh five, just so it's an even number. And we'll take a break and be back at eleven oh five. Thank you. All right. All right, the staff has not come back from developing our condition of approval. So I think we'll postpone or continue to adjourn the commission until eleven fifteen, and then we'll come back into the meeting. Thank you.
Wait, wait, the condition is coming.
I'd like to ask, ask a question.
All right, it's 11:15, so we will bring the commission back into session. Actually, we have a commissioner question, so.
Yeah, I guess I want to get back to, no, I appreciate the fact that the applicant has come up and been willing to work with us on a change in our conditions. But I'm kind of a little puzzling over what we're talking about, a swale that this will drain into, and then it eventually runs into a creek, probably Secret Ravine Creek or something, I don't know. And I don't know how far downstream the gentleman is, but in terms of 0.3 cubic feet per second making it through the swale, which I presume is not even intermittent, maybe it's an intermittent stream, or maybe it's just a swale. Yeah, maybe you could get up there, because you're the engineer that really. And so, so I guess the question that I'm hearing, though, you know, I'm not objecting to, you know, your agreement to go with some modifications, but what I'm hearing, I'm wondering for .03 cubic feet per second, how much of that really makes it down to the creek, whatever creek it is?
Yeah, like I, like I said before, and the county engineer both agreed with my opinion, this is a less than significant increase to flow. So basically, if, for example, he has eight inches of water flowing in a swale, which is basically a shallow ditch, if he has eight inches of flow flowing next to his house, an increase of .03 CFS would be almost unmeasurable. It would be 8.01 inches. So there's, that's kind of where we say less than significant increase to flow. So us trying to mitigate this, I, I'm kind of puzzled, but at the same time, I, you know, I'd like to get this to go through, so if we need to mitigate for that, then, you know, we can. But in addition, other considerations are, there are other things that increase flow that are not even included in this coverage, this definition of coverage, like driveways, which can impact this gentleman a lot more. And just the statistical variability of rainfall. He would be hard pressed to try to file suit stating, you know, because this gentleman a mile upstream from him covered his patio, now I'm getting flooding at my house, it would be a stretch. So that's kind of where engineering judgment comes in, and that's where I say, you know, less than significant increase. But if we'd like to mitigate for that, you know, I have no problem with that. What I do would like to know is, what mitigation will we do? Of course, dry wells, but will we, what will that criteria be based off of? What storm event? What capture of water are we going to need? For each individual project after this, are we going to need to get a licensed engineer to produce a drainage report for each and every project that people are, you know? So I'd like to just make sure that we're all on the same page as to how are we going to mitigate this into what extent, and, you know, if it's really feasible for everyone involved.
So, so is the, is it the house that we're talking about downstream, is that on the swale, or is that on a regular creek?
I personally have no, I don't know, I know the neighborhood that he's talking about, I don't know the exact situation, where I just kind of basically analyzed a lot of flows just within my neighborhood, and he's in an adjoining neighborhood. And everything that I know, the swales through my neighborhood basically exit towards Auburn-Folsom Boulevard, and they head in a southwest direction. But I can, I can look into, you know, more specifically, this location that this gentleman is concerned about, and, you know, and analyze flows leading up to that, and to verify if indeed the properties in question are going to attribute, or if they're not going to attribute to flows there.
Yeah, well, I'm just kind of thinking that we have had other hearings where, I believe it's Secret Ravine Creek that's down there, isn't it? The, on the north side of Auburn-Folsom?
Yeah, I'm not too familiar with.
But I think that drainage, I know we did, had one just recently where the Army Corps had redone the flood zones, and there have been problems down in that area that probably...
Yeah.
Yeah, probably that this one really wouldn't make much of a change in the problems that they're having, if the house is adjacent to the creek and maybe has been.
Yeah, the most significant changes that we usually see is where, where we have a water course going underneath a road that is basically put into a culvert, and if someone in their general maintenance, you know, changes that culvert size from a 12-inch to an 18-inch, flows downstream can increase, and where there was no flooding before, there could be some more flooding in addition. But in this case, you know, what we're proposing is, like I said before, less than significant increases, covered patios, and, you know, an addition onto the back of a house. And the numbers that I calculate are extremely conservative. This is assuming that impervious area is basically going to flow off the roof and then travel in a concrete gutter all the way to where it leaves the property. What is actually happening is these downspouts are discharging onto these properties, which on average are about .6 to .7 acres, and the flow is traveling on the ground, where a lot of infiltration is occurring there. So the less than significant increase that I've said will be even less than, I mean, miniscule. So, so yeah, that's kind of.
Can we, can we read the, let us read the.
Yeah, I think we need to bring it back to the staff here.
We can go from there.
Yes, please.
So the condition that would be drafted would be at 15A, and it states, "Any lots within the Walden Woods Footprint Exemption Group at units, at unit 1, lots 19, 34, 35, 39, and 41, comma, and units 2 and 3, comma, lots 12, comma, 19, comma, 63, comma, 77, comma, 81, comma, 88, and 100, must submit to the Development Review Committee prior to building permit issuance a drainage analysis showing that the runoff from the increase in lot coverage is reduced back to the runoff from the original project approval lot coverage to the satisfaction of the Development Review Committee." And since we were looking at conditions as well, we would also suggest a clerical modification to the proposed condition 32, which currently states, "Approval of this conditional use permit modification allows additional lots listed in Attachment D to be listed as part of the Walden Woods Footprint Exemption Group." And we would strike out that reference in Attachment D to be listed, and instead would call out the specific lots identified, which are the ones mentioned earlier, units 1, lots 19, 34, 35, 39, and 41, and units 2 and 3, lots 12, 19, 63, 77, 81, 88, and 100.
All right, thank you. Candice, I saw you there, did you have any additional comment?
Yes, I just would like to add that, kind of piggybacking on what the applicant was saying, for example, if someone were to just increase, say they were allowed 3,000 square feet, and they proposed to have 3,100 square feet, they would need to provide, based on that condition, a minor drainage analysis to show that that 100 square feet increase is, does not increase flows past what the 3,000 square foot lot coverage would, and that minor drainage analysis could show that it's .0000 something, and they may not even have to do any mitigation. I use that word loosely, because this isn't a sequel process, but I just wanted to point that out, that they would be providing the drainage analysis that may show nothing, and so it would be, it would be that case for 100 square feet difference, or 500 square feet difference, and it may show that there's no increase based on that minor, no increase in flows based on the minor increase in lot coverage. So just to give some more background on what that will look like when that condition is implemented.
Okay, thank you. All right, any additional questions of the commission?
I just have, one, one, one thing I'd like to be added to the verbiage of that is the peak flow, not just, just off runoffs, because there's kind of a difference, so we just, the peak flow is what is, is the main concern when, when we're referring to pre and post-construction flows.
Candice, your.
Yes, I agree with that, and it can be the 10-year and 100-year peak flows, do you agree with that?
All right.
That's usually what we look at.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion? I, I'm glad to make a motion, but I, it's a little unclear to me what that motion looks like.
Sure, so the recommendation, there's two listed above, you can certainly start with the first one.
Okay, so this is, this is actually corrected verbiage?
The first one, the verbiage is correct, because that is the sequel compliance portion. The modified conditions would be the second one identified up there, and then also the third one that is listed in your staff report that has to do with the map modification. And for, for purposes of ease, I would just suggest referencing the modified condition 15A and 32.
Okay, you're gonna, that fell out of my brain, so you'll have to come back to that in a minute, but.
Also for clarity, this is approval, right? We're not recommending to the board supervisors.
Right.
Okay. This is for approval, yeah.
Okay, I move that the, the commission approve, finding that the project categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 150, or 15305, the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and section 18.36.070 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class 5, Minor Alterations in Land Use Limitations. The project results in minor alterations in land use limitations in areas with an average slope of less than 20% that do not result in any change to the land use or density. Second. We have a first and a second, Julie, if you could call the roll.
First for Mr. Woodward, second Mr. Herzog, vote for Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
All right, second motion?
For the second motion, it would be as indicated up there, but just at the end, when you, the portion that says, "Subject to the conditions of approval," would just reference as modified for conditions 15A and 32.
Subject to conditions of approval. And what was the second part of that?
As modified in conditions 15A and 32.
Okay. I move that the commission approve a modification to the Walden Woods Conditional Use Permit, LDA-923, condition 11B, to include the 12 additional lots listed as part of this application to the Walden Woods Footprint Exemption Group, Attachment D, subject to the conditions of approval, Attachment C, as modified in 15 and 32.
15A and 32.
15A, sorry, and 32.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, Julie, if you could call a roll.
And before we call roll, I would just like to read that condition in, because there was a change to it to include peak flow. So just stick with me. Condition 15A would read, "Any lots within the Walden Woods Footprint Exemption Group at unit 1, lots 19, 34, 35, 39, and 41, and units 2 and 3, lots 12, 19, 63, 77, 81, 88, and 100, must submit to the Development Review Committee prior to building permit issuance a drainage analysis showing that the runoff from the increase in lot coverage is reduced back to the runoff and peak flow levels from the original project approval lot coverage to the satisfaction of the Development Review Committee, period."
Thank you. So with that, roll call, please, Julie.
I have a first for Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Herzog, vote Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
And then there is one more motion that I think staff would ask and make, and that is the same wording as is in number 2, but instead of for the Walden Woods Conditional Use Permit. Give me one second. It would be modification to the Walden Woods Units 1, 2, and 3 Final Subdivision Map, instead of the reference to Walden Woods Conditional Use Permit. If you'd like, I can read in the motion, and then you can let me know if it.
That'd be great. Sounds like a great idea.
Approve a modification to the Walden Woods Units 1, 2, and 3 Final Subdivision Map. Approve a modification to the Walden Woods Units 1, 2, and 3 final subdivision map to include the 12 additional lots listed as part of the application to the Walden Woods footprint exemption group. Attachment D, subject to the attached conditions of approval as modified at conditions 15A and 32, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
So move, Herzog.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Julie, if you could call.
I have a first motion, Mr. Herzog, second, Mr. Woodward. Vote, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
All right. "The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619." Thank everyone. At this time, we're moving on to our second timed item, the 2020 Development Agreement Annual Review. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Michelle Kingsbury, Cedra Principal Management Analyst, will be presenting this item.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Kingsbury with the Cedra Group. This will be a quick item. The item before you today is the Fiscal Year 2020 Development Agreement Annual Review. Pursuant to Placer County Code, Sections 15.20, 120, as well as Section 17.58, 250, as well as other requirements noted in the development agreements that require, that also require an annual review, we're here today. We sent letters out to the various property owners to self-certify whether or not they were in compliance with their development agreement provisions. Their responses were included within your package as an attachment to your planning commission report. We have development agreements with various participating property owners throughout the county. For West Placer County, those are centered with the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan, Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, the Regional University, Placer Ranch, and Bigford Specific Plans. In addition, up in the eastern part of the county, we have the Homewood Master Plan Development Agreement, Martyrs Valley West Specific Plan Development Agreement, as well as Villages at Squaw Development Agreement. And then last but not least, we have two development agreements with the aggregate projects for Tykert and Cemex out by Camp Far West. At this point in time, we only have two agreements that are told due to litigation. Those would be the Martyrs Valley West, as well as the Villages at Specific Plan, and tolling is just basically that the agreements are paused and on hold. Our West Placer developments, including Riola Vineyard, Placer Vineyards, and Bigford Ranch, are currently underway with construction activities, and we anticipate some additional maps middles from our other West Placer projects coming in shortly. Similar to last year, we are not recommending a finding of compliance for our Cemex DA. The ownership group did change last year with Cemex, and they're currently working with staff as well to address the outstanding conditions and compliance issues with their development agreement. While this presentation is brief, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, we can proceed forward to the recommendations and ask your commission to find that, and I can list all the agreements. But the Bigford Ranch Specific Plan, the Placer Vineyards, Riola Vineyard, Regional University, and Placer Ranch Specific Plan Development Agreements, as well as those agreements associated with Martyrs Valley West, Villages at Squaw, and the Homewood Master Plan, and last but not least, the Tykert Aggregate Facility Development Agreements, have made a good faith effort to comply with the terms and conditions of their development agreements during the 2020 review period, and we, we would ask that that review period be concluded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions? For the commission. Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to open up the public comment period. I see no one in the audience. Is there anyone who's raised their hand on Zoom? There is not, so I will close the public comment period. No responses necessary, so at this time, commission discussion, and I'll ask for a motion.
Well, Chairman, I'm happy to make a motion. I just want to pause to make sure there isn't any.
I don't see any discussion.
I'd like to go ahead and, is approval? Is this approval? It's approval? Not recommendation to board supervisors?
Right, this is for Planning Commission direct action, and the action requested is up there on the first one, which is basically find that the developers for the development agreements have made a good faith, good faith effort to.
Okay, got it. So I'd like to move that we approve and receive the report and find the Bigford Ranch Specific Plan, Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, Riola Vineyard Specific Plan, Regional University Specific Plan, Placer Ranch Specific Plan, Martyrs Valley West Specific Plan, Village at Squaw Valley Specific Plan, Homewood Master Plan, and Tykert Aggregate Facility have made a good faith effort to comply with the terms and conditions of their respective development agreements during the 2020 review period.
Second. We have a first and a second, but we have a roll call, please.
First motion, Mr. Herzog, second motion, Mr. Woodward. Vote, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
This second one wasn't in the report, but it relates to Sequa, so I guess it's pretty standard. But I'll go ahead and further move that we approve and find the action requested is not a project as defined in Sequa Guidelines Sections 15378, and that none of the conditions of Sequa Guidelines Sections 15162 requiring additional environment or review exist.
Do we have a second?
Second, sorry.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please, Julie.
First motion, Mr. Herzog, second, Mr. Woodward. Vote, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
And Clayton, do we read the appeals language on this motion?
Probably best to be safe, but there's no appeal if somebody didn't provide comment or opposition.
Okay, I'll read it, though, that "The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619." With that, this meeting is adjourned.